Okay, the December ninth, twenty twenty special meeting of the Board of Selectmen will now come to order. Uh, thank you to everyone who is either on the phone line or on Vivek's um for joining us on Facebook Live. Just a reminder to anyone on the phone line, please just stay muted until public comment or until uh public comment. So, thank you. So, to start, um do you guys want to join me for part of the meeting?
Yeah.
The leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, so, okay, so the first one, approval of the minutes. Could I get a motion to approve the special meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second? I'm second.
Thank you. Motion, is like a, any discussion?
No.
Should I give that?
No changes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so motion carries. Thank you, thank you. Um, so for correspondence, we received a letter, a very um well articulated about a letter from the Climate Change Task Force requesting that the Board of Selectmen consider declaring a climate emergency in Stonehenge. We wanted to enter that today under correspondence. And then just to let you guys know, um, and I'd love the Climate Change Task Force know, um, my next steps are gonna be to meet with town staff, 'cause some of the recommendations in there are definitely impacting them and just to get their take on it, and then we got maybe in the January meeting, we'd actually put it as an agenda item and we could discuss it more. Um, but if you guys had anything you wanted to share or comment on that now?
No, I think it's a um, a committee on the liaison to the Task Force. So, there's a lot of thought and conversation put into it. Um, I do think we need to discuss it, uh, for the financial impact and the manpower impact it'll have. Um, my whole thought initially was, so if we have something like this, it just creates an awareness that as a cultural community, we're being affected by sea level rise, however it's being caused, the climate change or whatever. So, it's something we really need to address. So, I think it's important, uh, we do need to take a look at it.
Yeah, I just wanna understand, to make sure there's no kind of unintentional, you know, side effect that come with it that we're not making a call.
Emergency, yeah.
There's unintentional, unintentional consequences, that way.
Yeah. No, yeah, it was, from what I looked through, very well thought out, well researched. Um, I think that I just need to think and talk with the asshole about the, the impact on resources and um, and how to just be sure what we're putting forward, we can actually commit to. Um, and also just how it aligns with the dates set out by the state, 'cause they have their own climate targets. So, I just wanted to look a little bit at that. Um, and so, yeah, if you guys have time to look at it, and then we can put it on the January meeting, so thanks.
Yeah, and actually, um, there was a gentleman, uh, whose name I don't have right now, and from some department that I don't recall right now, um, but he's from, he was from the state, and he talked about what the benefits are of having something like this.
Uh-huh.
So, it might be a good idea, I was thinking of asking, um, Rick, who is the chair, just to see if he could come or attend somehow and, um, educate us.
Yeah.
As he did the Climate Change Task Force, so the benefits of having.
That could be wonderful, maybe we could add him to an upcoming January meeting agenda. But also, if you as correspondent, um, and I can mention it to Rick too, but, um, if the Climate Change Task Force could in addition, um, the, the proposal is really well researched about some of the benefits to the actual declaration for the town would be good. I didn't see that specifically.
Okay. And then, those are my questions.
Okay.
Uh, so that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, so we'll look at that, we'll work with you, and think about January meeting for that. Um, so we have, basically, the full meeting is appointment, which is really exciting though, a lot of people wanna get involved. Um, so the first one, um, we have an appointment, a new appointment, to the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority Board for representatives, so could I get a motion to appoint Sarah Baker as a representative to the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority Board?
So moved.
I second.
Uh, motion, wait, any discussions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, thank you, Sarah, and we'll keep thanking Sarah, because she's, she's already has her words. This is one of our.
So, what I know about her, she'll be, she's very diligent in everything she, um, pursues, so she'll be good addition.
That's great, no, she's.
She'd be good addition in any course, she'll probably be part of.
Yes, no, she seems, um, wonderful, and so, we're also very excited that she, um, is gonna be also, obviously, today, appointed to the Woods, Pocket Hawk Wild and Scenic River Stewardship Council, which is a great group where she had a meeting lots of weeks ago now, um, and she joined. So, I'd love to get a motion to appoint her, um, and I did wanna note that she's filling out a term that basically expires in a couple of weeks, so we wanted to write it up that she'll basically fill out the next term, which will then end in January twenty twenty three, so she doesn't get appointed for two weeks and have to come back in January three again.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Very. Um, yeah, we'll do it, we'll like, her term will run, yeah, through January twenty twenty three. Okay, all right. Uh, so could I get a motion to appoint Sarah Baker as an alternate to the Woods, Pocket Hawk Wild and Scenic River Stewardship Council?
So moved.
I second.
Uh, motion, and a second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you again to Sarah, and um, it's a great, uh, that group is great, we met with them, we watched really North Stonehenge and Stonehenge, um, show about kayaking trails, it was really great, but um, she'll, she'll be great on there too. Um, but, great. And then, final one for Sarah, triple Sarah, um, is the Stormwater Task Force. So, could I get a motion to appoint Sarah Baker to the Stormwater Task Force?
So moved.
Your second?
I second.
Okay, motion, and a second, for discussion, I will just say, the Stormwater Task Force has been dormant for quite some time, um, and Sarah knows that, um, but now that we have our new county engineer, um, he's obviously been getting up to speed and working on a lot of projects already, but this is gonna be also on his list to hopefully revive and get back working on. And um, he's been doing a lot with them at Stormwater permitting, so he's well versed in this. I think we'll be able to get this task force back up and running, um, but it's pretty good how Sarah is already ready to join when they meet again.
And there's, um, experience overlap for those three, so, um.
Yeah, yeah, there is, it's a pretty good synergy.
And I, I was gonna say, I was on the Stormwater Task Force for years, and we were very active originally. We did a lot of fantastic education in the schools, we bought these stormwater models, and we take them in so elementary and middle school kids could kind of see what happened, um, with the stormwater, we're opposed.
Yeah.
Um, so that was a big part of it, this, this was actually a great, you know, great group, great thing to happen.
Well, if we get them back up and going in, in early twenty twenty one, um, hopefully maybe you could join them for.
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Inspirational, and kickoff, yeah.
He's already showing on the.
Kickoff, yay, yay. Okay, great, so, um, any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. I know, I actually kind of think it's been a stormwater task force. Um, so, okay, now, okay, new, to a new appointment, I'm also very excited. So, for the Conservation Commission, could I, I, could I get a motion to appoint Raven Kelly Dinwiddie to the Conservation Commission?
So moved.
Your, your second?
I second.
Uh, first and second, any discussion?
No, glad to see her participate.
Yeah, I'm really excited, um.
A lot of energy.
Yes.
She has a lot of energy, a lot of energy to go.
And she, uh, just like Sarah, met with the, the chair, um, they talked, um, ahead of time, and then still wanted to do it, so that was really good, so, um, no, thank you. So, um, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Um, and then, a second one for Raven. Um, so could I also get a motion to appoint Raven Kelly Dinwiddie to the Water Prime Commission?
So moved.
Do I have your second?
I second.
Uh, any discussion?
No, 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 that's okay.
Yes, and again, she met with the chair, and um, I think it went well, and I think it'll be great, I'm, I'm excited, a little, um, the, the fun group too, so, um, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you so much to Raven and Sarah, um, for your interest in the new commission. And hopefully others will follow suit, we do have other openings, so. Um, so for the reappointment, we have the entire beautification committee, is trying to reappoint them, um, and we're very grateful, they're such an active committee, um, you know, as we've done, they, they do so much for you, or particularly this time of year, people go around town and see it, um. So, could I get a motion to reappoint Julie Holland, Danielle Barrios, Kristen Hartman, I O'Brien, Carol Nossick, Eric Beverley, Kit Harper, Stacy Casada, and Anne Marie Kazanga Clark to the Beautification Committee?
So moved.
Your second?
I second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
No, I just wanna say, they are a fabulous group full of energy that we're so fortunate as a town to have.
Um, so I have a question, when I saw, when I saw this on our, in our, um, on the agenda. Is there any way of staggering now, so that we don't have the whole beautification committee up to our renewal at one point in time?
They have their own bylaws that they go by.
Oh, okay.
They have a separate, I mean, that, this is the way that they have it set up, it's something you could make sure it's separate.
My, my, I am.
Yes.
So, I will mention them.
Which is something they wanna do, like they used to have it staggered, and then I think they went to this more formatted.
Okay, just so that there's some continuity? 'Cause what if they all at the same time, they're like, no, we're done!
That would be really bad.
Yeah, it would, alright, it would be, so, okay.
Uh. Probably no, just my experience. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you to the Beautification Committee. Um, okay, so another reappointment, so, for planning and zoning, could I get a motion to reappoint, um, Ben Dilbert and Charles Sheehan to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
So moved.
I second.
Motion, and a second, any further discussion?
They're, they're active participants of Planning and Zoning Commission.
They are, they're great, Ben joined our POCD committee meeting yesterday, or Monday, um, and he was great, and Charles was very, um, they're, and the WPCA, so, yeah, thank you both. Okay, so, um, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, Ben and Chuck.
So much.
Okay, another one, ready? Uh, for the Economic Development Commission, could I get a motion to reappoint Kevin Fowler to the Economic Development Commission?
So moved.
I second.
Uh, motion, and a second, any discussion?
No.
No, just a big thank you to Kevin for staying on, um, he's co-chair along with Dave Hammond, and they do a wonderful job, so thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Okay, one more, the Shellfish Commission, so this one is a little of a, a watch. So, could I get a motion to reappoint Peter Moore, but he's gonna move from a regular to an alternate, and Austin Clark, who will move from an alternate to a regular, of the Shellfish Commission?
So moved.
Your second?
Can we do that, too, though?
Yeah, I can, unless you wanna join motion, yeah. Unless you wanna not appoint someone. Um, okay, motion, and a second, any discussion? Okay, thank you, okay, uh, all those in favor?
Uh, aye.
Aye, so thank you to Peter and to Austin, and, um, that's another very great active group. Um, okay, old business, up beyond COVID. So, I think, just you guys know, and just anyone listening, hopefully they know, so town hall has been, uh, twenty night only since Thanksgiving, uh, so far, we've had only, I'd say, very, very minimal, um, feedback, and, um, most of it's been positive, I think most of the, the staff has said, we did another check-in today, it's been going well. Um, you know, if somebody comes to the front door and they don't know, you know, they just have to call, um, or one person didn't have a phone, so someone else helps them, and so far, I know that was great, or some people knock, and then we can come and help them. So, most of it's been calling or making appointments, it's been, it's been helping to decrease the flow, people will also call now, and then you say, oh, well, you can actually do this via Dropbox, or via email or phone. So, it's been helping reduce the flow, especially for the building department, with getting a head of the around traffic, um, which is whenever we have like lines outside, um, there's so much really happening in Stonehenge.
Oh, you mean for the, uh.
Permit, for the permit, yeah.
Okay.
So, the staff helping them and sort things, and, um, yeah, so, and, and planning and zoning, and tax has been busy, um, so, so far, it's been working okay, um, people haven't even been to Dropbox, or meeting them at the door, um, where some people have made appointments to come in, so, there's, we're gonna wait to see what our numbers are tomorrow, but we might extend it through the end of the year, so we talked to staff about it, um, and we're basically waiting to see what our numbers in Stonehenge look like, if, that's post Thanksgiving numbers, will really start to hit tomorrow, when they, um, release our, kind of, everything is delayed a week, so we'll get our week numbers for two weeks ago, basically, on Thursday, so, I think that'll be kind of telling, so we'll see, um, how that goes. But there's a chance we might extend it till the end of the year, so they do. We don't have any real complaints, so hopefully it's been working okay for residents. Um, the other thing is, um, the, the, um, the group share, which I think a lot of you people know about, so, the Stonehenge Health Area Residents in Emergencies, uh, we did a video, thank Stacy again, um, and we posted it this week, um, with Peter Frenney, he was crazy, he came in, we did a quick video, but just to remind residents, um, the residents who's there, they want food delivery deliveries, if they want a book drop off in the library, they want a phone call check-in, they want pet food delivery, um, you know, they can reach out, talk about what their needs are, and whether you're at-risk population, during quarantine, um, if you're, if having, you know, a challenge kind of getting out because of other COVID-related issues, um, basically, we want to utilize them, they hold this stuff, they have one-eight-hundred number, email, website, everything, so they're fully prepared and ready to help, maybe North Stonehenge, Stonehenge, and the Mystic River, so, hopefully, um, people will take some of that, and they're, they're a great, um, great, great organization, uh, super local out here, so, right. Um, and then, uh, the, um, the tough thing we had at the high school, was really good, um, we had a pretty strong turnout, not as strong as Stonehenge, so we didn't use the Everbridge emergency nine-one-one, because we think the vast challenge to kind of lay low on that for a little bit, 'cause people were disconnecting from the emergency alert at an alarming rate, and I think it was because of all that, uh, reminders by, about testing too much, so I don't think we overdid it in Stonehenge, but, so, yeah, everybody kind of considered, so we took a pause on that, I think we have about fifty to seventy-five people left, um, on average, from the other four we did, um, but, you know, it might have impacted it, so we'll see. But basically, right now, from Leslie Yonu Haven, um, who we've talked to both about providing testing, there's just such a demand for it, and now they're gearing into vaccine and flu shots, um, so, it's unlikely that we'll get another one in Stonehenge anytime soon, but, you know, we're here, we're ready, you know, we can move the school, Peter Anderson's been fantastic, um, so, we're, everybody knows we're ready to go, it could be a Wednesday probably, or a weekend if we got it again, but, um, it's, it's probably not very easy, it's, it's on it. Um, so those are the, with the bigger COVID thing. Um, so before we move on to comments, there are others, if anyone is on the line and wants to have a comment under public comment, you can press star three, and then, just as a reminder, then you'll hear a prompt, and then you have to press star six. And so, we'll wait. Thank you. All right, we can go into our comments, but, um, just, I'll say it one last time, if anybody has to like, to press star three, and then star six.
And we can be interrupted, too.
Yeah, yeah, if anybody's delayed, kind of, get on, you, you can feel every interrupt us. Um, okay, so, for comments on the selection, Ben, do you wanna know?
Um, sure. And it, first, I just wanted to say, 'cause I don't think I had a chance to tell you, that I have been, um, selected to be on the working, in the working group, helping develop new regulations for release based spill reporting, and characterization and remediation, so.
That sounds so intense.
So, it is, it's a large.
For the state?
For the state, because they're changing the regulations, they're going to kind of sunset the Transfer Act, which is something Connecticut has, which is very different from most other states.
Okay.
And they're going to a release phase, which means, instead of having to clean up an entire site, if you had a bill, which is kind of what the Transfer Act does now for certain cases, if you have a relief, you deal with that bill, or that relief, or that issue.
Okay.
The problem is, you know, there's a lot of overlapping things, and right now municipalities, for example, have a lot of liability relief. And, so, I'm actually a representative representing both municipal officials and licensing departments in profession.
Thank you so much, and add it to your list.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. No, I'm really excited about it, I mean, it's probably gonna be at least an eighteen-month process, with kind of monthly meetings, virtual meetings, so the working group and then subcommittee, so we just had our first meeting, just getting started, but I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
Really, I'm seeing things now from not just the LET, but from the municipal perspective, and there's just so many things that really need to be addressed, so.
So excited, but.
No, I mean, it speaks to your level of expertise, and it's, uh, it's, yeah, it's, it's.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so, I, you know, I have been following my liaison, Board of Ed, Wetlands, WPCA, some of the other ones didn't have meetings last month, or won't have meetings this month, and I just wanted to highlight a couple things. Um, Wetlands did approve at their meeting the titled floodgate, parking, and rain garden area.
Okay.
At the voting hall, which is exciting, and so now, I had asked them about kind of a timeframe for that work, and, um, Mr. Ray is currently preparing some bid documents for that culvert replacement, and the valve vault in replacement, and the bridle lot resurfacing, and the rain garden, um, so that portion of the work, Candy Palmer was thinking should go up to bids sometime in January, and if the bids are within budget, they could start February or March, and then construction would be about six weeks for that, so then repaving around the building would be after that, so, so we're kind of, within April, maybe May. So, we still have to go through planning and zoning, but really, it probably just requires a zoning process.
Okay.
So, that's exciting that that's gonna happen.
I know you also give that update to the Facilities Committee, just so they are aware of the timeline.
Yes, I will, they're not meeting this month, but I will send a following updates on that, 'cause I just got that update today.
That sounds amazing, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, not gonna do it for everything, and just the other thing I wanted to highlight is on Mystic River Boat House Park, because, you know, they've been meeting, and I had a subcommittee that, um, was starting to discuss the historic house, but we kind of wanted to step back and, you know, understand that the town has a budget to construct the park infrastructure that is part of the bond, that budget does not include moving and rehabilitating that house to meet historic standards, or the remediation, so, any of that work that was to happen has to be through grants. We are working and very close to having a completed application for the remediation. It wasn't complete, but then the state changed the application, but they still haven't, um, met, the bond committee still hasn't met, so, we still don't have a date of when it's due, but we, you know, are asking for money to renovate, to, um, remedy.
Remediate.
It's like, it's hard to imagine. To remediate the park, um, including, you know, any kind of tap or soil to cover the impact of this bill. We would also apply for grants, and Susan Cullen has identified several other potential grants that would, um, be associated with the living shoreline, the boardwalk, or the dock, and, um, possibly even historic house rehabilitation.
Yeah. Thank you.
But not, but the, the grants aren't to the full extent of what the total cost of the project is, right? So, there's little pieces of grants.
There are little pieces of grant.
Okay.
And she's been kind of describing it as bucket, so we've been talking about the bucket, like.
Magic bucket of money.
The bucket of money, um, so it is important to understand that, that there is a budget in place, but it covers really the infrastructure, you know, utilities, buildings, the actual park, but these other things are not included in that budget, and that's the remaining money from the fund.
Yeah, I think if you either forgot, you've been looking through the, especially like the stormwater, the, the stormwater, like stormwater drainage, and utilities, like you mentioned, things that, you know, you don't think about, but a lot to go there, uh, and I know most grants require a match of some amount, so, or they're not quite as much as would be needed for the project, so, yeah, I think it's good to keep identifying things, but then, I guess, have they, has the subcommittee got a point of talking about other, if we don't have enough through the grants, like private fundraising or other options, or?
Well, there was always the private fundraising for the boat house. If the boat house is constructed, it's through private fundraising, that's not something that the town is paying for. Um, and there could be other private fundraising as well, I do know already that certain things have been kind of earmarked for donations.
Okay.
It's my understanding, I think that the Lord of the Lord has already donated a bench for the park, so, which is nice, because when you look at our budget for infrastructure, you know, some of those things are in there, and you can say, all right, maybe we can, you know, do something else instead of this, I mean, it does also give us an opportunity to look at green infrastructure.
Yes.
Um, as opposed to maybe storm drains, maybe we could do some rainbows or some soils, or something like that.
That's, yeah.
But, yeah, it is important to understand that, you know, there's a lot of plans that they're talking about, but.
But what was promised to the taxpayers is a park.
A park with public access.
With public access.
A park with some kind of a dock or ramp or something.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for being, um, so I have, I know you've met with Sue, and you're part of the committee, so, thank you.
Because there's a lot of work, but, yeah.
Um, thank you.
Oh, true.
Yeah, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I think that's good, now, I'm gonna go through everything.
Thank you.
I need a minute.
Um, so the Christian making that met, and I told them that, um, they could get, I brought up the contacts for seniors, and I told them that if they could get the information, that we would find somebody to put the data, um, you know, to log on into the town website, um, I also suggested that, so I think they're working on, um, a some type of communication to seniors, and I forget the number, there's twenty-five hundred that they absolutely know where they live, but I suggested to add a trusted contact, so that, so it's not just the seniors' information, but like, who checks in on them?
Yeah.
Like, is it a family member or not, and then gets their email address, 'cause not all seniors have email addresses.
Yeah.
So that if something, if there's some type of an emergency notification that goes out, and the senior somehow that misses it, the trusted contact, or a family member would get it.
Yeah.
So, everyone's really excited about, about it, the PNC is, uh, you know, the, the Promising Services is, uh, so, um, so I think this is something that's gonna happen, so.
I wanted to say, too, that I had, um, spoken briefly to Greg Howard, and was gonna follow up with a phone call, which I haven't had a chance to do, but he said he's really happy to help with some of the contacts, and.
Okay, the project.
And he does have information for that, so.
Because of the Everbridge, okay, very, yeah.
So, he said he absolutely, you know, will be happy to help with that, and does have information.
Okay, um, and, um, I think the Promising Services said they even, they had enough money in their budget for mailing, and, you know, for return mailing and whatnot, so, so that, so that'll, that'll work. Um, the Climate Change Task Force, you see the results of the past couple of meetings that we've had, and it's the Declaration, so, um, so more work to go on there, but it's a very enthusiastic group of people, so, it's fun to be on that one, so. Um, planning and zoning didn't need, there aren't any applications to review, and this mission needs tomorrow night, Leslie needs tomorrow night, um.
Board of Ed.
Tomorrow night, so, so, that's what I have right now.
Okay, great, no, I'm trying to keep mine, um, short and sweet, um, but I doubt it, no, I'll try. Um, so, obviously, a quick start with the baby, um, so, the good news may well start, so, the adoptive boot program for human services, where you adopt like a child and you do a boot, um, is often running, so I didn't know if you, if you guys want to, we can send you the information if you want, you can either actually go out, build mat tubes, um, and you can wanna actually buy the boot, whether they're a boy or a girl, and true size, age, um, or you can just do a monetary donation, and Human Services will do it for you, but also, to anyone, for people that might be listening, never forget the word, um, but, uh, it's a great program they do every year, and it'd be really great, also, this weekend is the stuff of cruiser that the police do every year, and it'll be slightly modified, but still absolutely happening, so you can drop off toys, some people drop off bikes, it's like, very exciting, and then Human Services helps, um, arrange a point of time where families can come in and actually pick out the gift, so like, when, you know, the day happens, they stuff the cruiser, but then the rest of the week, um, families actually will come in and buy equipment only, and come out and actually pick out the presents, so it's, it's a really nice, um, system, so, um, hopefully some people will do that. Um, also, maybe, I don't know if you wanna mention it, at the Board of Ed meeting, I can send it to your email, but I'm so excited, um, the, the school, Anne Marie Lee and Marion, and all these administrators agreed to, uh, I played a crazy idea that I had, and the, um, Human Services is going to that forum, but, um, we, uh, tomorrow, we'll be dropping off, I think, sixteen hundred cars to all the schools, and they're gonna write to seniors.
Wow.
So, Leanne, Cher is gonna help facilitate through Human Services, to say, yeah, like, the goal is actually to have, if you can, there's like twenty-two hundred or something, that seniors that are on our registered list, um, so we're, I'm also this weekend to reach out to some of the preschools in town, um, and even the private schools, and see if they might wanna participate, so we can get to that number, 'cause, um, but if not, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best, and get to as many as we can, and if not, to, and so we will help roll it down based on other factors, but, they're just gonna do, um, like a, a little message, and a drawing, but every student will, will hopefully do one, um, the schools are really excited and on board, and just so, kind of, can do, I know there's so much on their plate, so it was, it was a long shot, and they were really, really nice about it, so we're excited.
And these are our super seniors, because they're. And these are our super seniors, because seniors, you know. So there's quite a range of, yeah, some senior contributors, senior, right, so these are our super seniors.
I like that, super seniors, yeah. And so we kind of, it'll be coming around the holidays, because, you know, it can be a bad time for people, especially with COVID and everything going on, but it would be more of a message of kindness, and just kind of, kind of spread some kindness, and just, you know, a nice, whether it's a picture from a second grader, or a senior in high school, and a message that they'll personally write out. So we're excited, so we'll see how that goes, and how many we get. But we're excited about that. And then also maybe the more complicated news. So we had, we've been having a lot of back and forth and meetings and calls, and outreach to other towns and other organizations, Stacy and I have been meeting a lot, with also our IT, Tom Clark, registrars, I mean, legislature, everybody trying to figure out how to have a virtual town meeting for the tax payment for Campbell Green. And very long story made shorter is, we just, we couldn't find a way to do it, that would be, we felt unfair to the residents. Between different things, like in our charter, where we should offer the option for a paper ballot, which is confidential, there was no system, no software, no way that we could do that for our residents, especially since a number of people don't necessarily use web access to the computer, they use, you know, a landmine at home, there's really no way. I was trying to figure out the timing, how to actually verify people, and just thinking about, you know, at the end of the day, it's up to voters to vote on this, and it just didn't feel like the, while we appreciate the executive order, and, you know, present sure some towns will be able to make use of it, it didn't, for an issue of this magnitude, it didn't feel right to put this out this way. So we had a call with Wynn's developers, saying we're very understanding, we had further brainstorming and back and forth of other options we could do, and in the end, basically we all decided it was best just to put a pause on this. So they, they're still going forward with their application to CHAPA, they're hoping our resolution that we passed at a previous meeting, saying that when it was safe to do so, we would put it forward to a town meeting, will help. And if, but it's the fact that we don't have the local match agreed to, means they don't get it this round, they said they'll do it the next round. So it's not like they don't get it now.
Is it once a year?
I can't remember if it's, I think it's normally once a year, but sometimes they have special funding rounds.
Okay.
But so they said, yeah, it would, it would delay the project, but they said also, this project was so well-positioned, you know, according to different checkboxes and everything, that they felt like there was a chance it could go first round, but most projects don't go first round, so you have to apply again, so I think it wasn't.
So they're gonna, they're gonna apply now with our resolution?
Yeah.
And it would have, even if we had a town meeting, it would have been most likely that they wouldn't have gotten past anybody the first time around.
They felt like they would have, just because it's such a, like, it's like, it's blocking.
Yeah, it has all the, yeah, all the boxes were checked.
But they also deal for other projects, or it doesn't check all the boxes. They're used to having to go two rounds, so obviously they prefer it, but they were understanding that we need to, so they will go for another round, but at some point we will need to send that to the residents to go round, because it'll be at a town meeting, and when it's safe to do so, so that will eventually come, but we'll, we'll see what happens with that, because that was kind of, that was yesterday, we decided on that, so.
Okay.
That was the big one.
I mean, it has to be, yeah.
Yeah, it is, we were really trying, and the deadline is January fifteenth, so it happens, so it was, you know, it wasn't like we could have months to figure it out, and it just didn't feel right, in terms of the residents. So we do, you know, we still are very committed to the project, very committed, you know, it's just a slight, a slight delay in the potential tax payment, but we're still talking with our tax with other, and their attorneys, to figure out what the actual tax payment could look like, so hopefully we'll, we'll have some time to get that worked out, and then residents will have longer to stay with it, read it, understand it, get through it. So we'll do that. And then, you know, there's, so we have a family, we're gonna do a post after this meeting, but today is December ninth every year, it is the International Day of Commemoration and Dignity of the victims of the crime of genocide and the prevention of the crime. So that, do we remind you, we take a moment of silence to honor and to say? Thank you, and we'll do a post, but basically, we were, we were reading more about it. Tomorrow is actually Human Rights Day, so they kind of, I think, have them linked together, but, so seventy-five years ago this year, the Nuremberg Trial happened, and so, and then a few years after that, they passed the convention to prevent and punish, and officially we have a legal definition around genocide, so we were just reading more about it today and thought it'd be good to reflect on it, and then tomorrow to think about human rights. So maybe to end on a positive note, this is probably our last meeting before the holiday or before the third year. Yeah, so we won't be again until 2021, and hopefully that year is gonna be more positive than pessimistic. Twenty twenty has been, but very many twenty twenties, I think we've, we've been more fortunate in Toronton now, obviously, so. But thank you, guys, for this meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Talk a lot on this side, everyone.
Yeah, you're welcome, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you, and anyone still listening, or listening later, don't forget, you can reach out to us anytime, and we will all be actively working, even if we all have another meeting until January. So with that, we can adjourn.
Okay. Yay.